We don't like being old in the first place. It doesn't take much.
Yes. All right.
Better?
Yeah, hopefully. I'm not sure.
You're out of badge?
I am. No.
Oh, why are you so frustrated?
So, I wanted to tell my folks. The one that came in the story. Oh, everything was a mistake.
Well, the other thing is all my real. Sure, it was long enough.
Well, I need to send two weeks.
They were in for your inspection. But maybe it's all tight now, it'll stay.
No, I have control. That's not to explain. Yeah.
You don't know what got double.
Yeah, of course. You want this thing back.
I would do that when my girls be great.
Hold on. Stop it.
One degree.
Second page, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
So you can call it.
If that's all win with Maggie, Maggie and then.
So that I'm on. Yeah. I'll just text.
And then Laura.
And then Jean was like. Yeah. Yeah, we did track sometimes. Yeah.
I should have put my garbage. I didn't want to.
So.
We do that every week.
Yeah.
Okay, six o'clock, all meeting order. There's no objection. I will dispense with the pledge of allegiance. We can move on. You know, you're all.
I do.
Uh, before we approve the agenda, Ron is here. Mike, you'd like to speak, so I'm gonna add him. Right in the very beginning.
That's fine. He's here to speak on behalf of the.
Yep.
Himself and the commission, the planning commission anyway, so.
And if there's something. So before we approve it, I would insert that there and. Ask for approval of the agenda. All approved. Thanks, Jim. Motion in second, all in favor? I opposed, none passes. Uh, Ron.
Okay, Ron, Rock, I'm the newest member on the planning commission. We had a meeting, a meeting in the day and. What do you want for all in favor of this proposal for the new. It lasted quite a while, for length of discussion and you didn't have any architect, engineer on the phone. You can either, I say something, I wasn't correct, you can correct me. And they, I went away with a kind of very uneasy feeling. Talked about we voted for all, approve it, I, in hindsight, think most people would have made even more. And I think the main reason came down to the location of where this facility was supposed to be. Next to the swamp, in the swamp, not a, not a well being spot. And the only thought was, they said that they had only considered locations of home in the city. I'd just like to throw up the idea that maybe the other non-city property should be considered and. The reasons why the site here, about the, of the north of the facility wasn't selected. I get thinking, well, if that's a snow issue, it is a hot room, or you could, we do this all the time, other places where you rock. You have a facility and you take the snow and a rental agreement, some piece of ownership, pile of snow there. They use, they have, well, these fire details and they'll call up somewhere in Idaho or someplace, farm or field, they'll rent forty acres for a month. Next thing you know, you got a city there and after a month, you're gone. So I guess that was my, my, my thought ahead, a very uneasy feeling, voted for it, didn't really feel good at all. I don't think any of us really felt like, even somebody better type, should we, shouldn't we be going because of this? This kind of a, a mixed message of, of, uneasy and reluctant vote. My only thought is, we consider the, some other sites or even the site here for the chemistry. With the obvious mistakes.
Yeah, I, I read your whole, this whole report. I just got done reading it. That was kind of interesting.
It was, that's the one, probably how it.
And there's quite a lot of question about that.
It was, yeah. And mostly, the, I remember, we had the morgue down there. It's not a good, not a well-drinking spot. I don't know exactly on these boring, but I had an issue, wash dish, I did some still. And he told me it was a wet and I had to remove the material. They did some boring. Well, if you look at the map, the whole darn, the quarter mile south of me is all the same material. But they got to do their thing. It's a little bit to do. That's just my point, that maybe, before you go ahead, if you go ahead. Maybe give us some thought. I don't know how much, from a technical standpoint, maybe that's not, you got your bill station, you do your puddings and stuff. And now, it may be okay. Concerned, people that were here had been around long, if they had first experience of playing ball down. About forty grains.
Thank you, Ron. Anything else for us?
No, that's it.
Any recommendations for you?
No, I just wanted to give my sense of, and I'm not gonna speak to other people, but I got, we probably agree, we got the feeling that. Nobody was really, yeah, dumb hole, that's, that's, came down to.
It came down to land.
Came down to land, land location, just the suitability of the site. Maybe in some side issues with overall cost and taxes, but I think the main thing was the. Was the local, is there not a better place to put it? It's gonna be a, you know, something to lead it. That's okay. I have this topic.
Thank you.
Oh, six o'clock.
Yes. Oh, I'm up.
Have a good meeting.
You too. Have a good night.
And thanks again. We, more business.
Um, so I was able to dip the documents into your packet tonight. My printer was down on Friday, so that's why you guys didn't see the bid abstract from Thursday until tonight, but. Um, this should be your second page in your, in your packet tonight. Um, this is the overview of how the bids came in on Thursday afternoon. You'll note TNT Construction came in at a low bid. You'll also note that all the bids came in at least four hundred grand over our threshold. Um. So, where do we sit right now? It's a question, right? Um. I went through all the bond schedules that Todd Hagan had provided to us up until this point. Um, and had some conversations with him today and Angela on Friday. And put together some other scenarios, but what I wanna do is, I kinda wanna recap what's happened since Thursday, so. Um, we all know we have a certain level of financing we have to stay within. Um, and, you know, you're probably wondering, where does that put us? So we can do a couple of different things. Um. And this is just me speaking freely, so I'm not trying to influence the board at all, I'm just trying to throw as much information at you guys so that you can make the right decision. We have basically a couple of options at this point, right? Our first option in my mind would be to work with architect and a contractor that had the little bid. And see if some costs can you could drop down, or we can do some reductions or some changes to the plans to bring that cost more to an affordable level. Okay? Um, and I'll have Mike chime in a little bit later when I'm, to speak to that more in detail. The other option is to change the entire scope of the project, but that would require us to re-bid. Um, and that's a requirement in USDA because that's our final grant manager. Um, in my opinion, uh, that would be. A battle that would probably put us in a worse situation than we are right now. And the one point six million, or how much a square foot, architectural estimate for the building. Was based off of late nineteen, early two thousand twenty costs for materials. It's now two thousand twenty-two, and we all know things are inflated, so. We couldn't have gone into this not believing that the cost of building wouldn't have been higher than what we had estimated. We just didn't know what that number was going to be. If the city were to scrap what we have right now. And go through a whole nother planning stage, we could either prolong the project. Or we could do a short-term, you know, re-scope of the project, but then we're going to. Run into a roadblock with the existing contractors that have the little bid. And probably upset enough contractors out there that it won't get moved in on. Then where are we? So we'll go back to option A. Do we have some opportunity to meet halfway on both sides? Speaking with Todd Hagan and Angela Baca Boy, there is some funding out there that the city can additionally bond for. Um, what I was just prefaced to at two thirty this afternoon is. Um, what the city could do is do a ten-year, two hundred, three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollar equipment. Um, short-term bond on top of the existing debt schedule. Um, and if we can meet with the contractor and see if there's some things on the project that can be reduced to make up that difference. Then we could potentially still move forward. Want to chime in on any small details?
Nothing small. I'll take over when you're done, if you want.
Great. Um, if I could detail a couple, um, couple of the points on the funding to throw that into you guys' perspective. I sent to you. The existing structure. See if I can find the right one. Yeah, just give me one second. Give me three. Okay, so this is the document that was originally provided to the council a year ago. When the project's total issuance was one point six five five million, okay? This gives you the breakdown of how much the levy would cover. Let's see if I can get this page down. Sorry. I wanna get to the schedules. Okay. And I apologize, but Todd never page numbers his documents. So it makes it a little difficult. This would probably be page seven of that first document. What you wanna see is. Probably pages eight to ten. So what this puts out to you is the total issuance of one point six five five. When that total payment starts. And its total principal and interest payment is sixty-nine thousand dollars annually, starting in two thousand twenty-five. Okay, that's, that's all of the debt. Keep in mind, a portion of this is gonna be paid by the levy, the general fund, and a portion of it's gonna be paid for utility. If I scroll down, keeping that sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollar in your head. Page nine breaks out how much of that debt would be in the general fund? Okay, it's about forty-five thousand. So that beats out what is eighty-four five. Right, so you've got your total, Bobby Joe, and then there's two funding sources for that total, okay? No, no, what you're seeing here is how much would be taken up out of the general fund of that total. So forty-five of the sixty-nine, and then if you get to page ten, you'll see twenty-four thousand would be taken up by the utility, okay? Now, when we originally went through this, I realized a good portion of the council was not on the board at the time, but I did a five-year debt study. That I use for the budgets, so the city can understand where debt schedules are going. Back when we originally did this, okay, and, and we all knew that our two thousand seven and our two thousand nine debt that sunsets by two thousand twenty-four. That we levy property taxes for to cover all that debt that would only come out of the general fund. Should basically drop off and then pick up by this project. Follow me so far?
We weren't raising taxes.
So we weren't raising taxes to do this project, okay? At this one point six. Dollar amount, okay? I understand, I understand, and it's, I mean, without like maybe a whiteboard. Yeah, so. What Todd Hagan did for me today is he said, I'll give you two more schedules, two hundred thousand dollars more, three hundred thousand dollars more, right? I gave you both. I'm only gonna show you the three hundred thousand dollars, okay? Because realistically, we need four, right? But we're hoping we can make some compromises somewhere with the architect and the contract, so I'm gonna show you the three hundred thousand. And then I'll show you how that affects the debt level, okay? So what I want you guys to open is the document that says go bonds three hundred thousand equipment. PDF. Blah, come on, mouse. Hey. And on page one, it's say one point nine six five million. Okay, knowing that our bid came in at what, two sixty-four, two million, sixty-four thousand, right? All right, so now what's happening is this, instead of only two columns, you have your CIP, which is your general fund. You have your utility revenue, which is your water and sewer accounts. Now you have a third column for that equipment, that short-term debt I said that Todd said we could take out. Bringing your grand total to one point nine six five. Okay? Everybody follow me so far? Now what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna bring you down to those debt schedules. Okay, and I'm gonna show you what Todd did to make this flow. I guess it's probably gonna be page seven again. Oh, maybe not. All right, let's start at page four of that document, you guys, okay? You remember the first one at one point six, your total payment was like sixty-nine thousand dollars? Your payment now is seventy-four, six hundred. Okay, went up above five grand. Okay, I like round numbers, it's easier for me. Okay. Right, the other thing to just side note is that his original debt schedule. Had the coupon rate or the interest rate at two point seven five, it is now at two point one, because that's what USDA is giving us. We know that now. We didn't know that when we, the first schedule went through. This is how it breaks out for the general fund. And the utility now. Okay, so you'll see the CIP or the general fund amount is still around that twenty-four thousand, right? And, um, it starts at two thousand twenty-five again, just like the first schedule. But if you go to page six, on the utility one. What Todd was able to do was push off the principal payment. Till two thousand thirty-four, and only paying interest out of the utility accounts. For ten years. Subsequently, in page seven. Providing that three hundred and ten thousand dollars of additional debt. As that principal and interest payment for ten years. So that realistically. The debt. From the long haul is only gonna be about another five grand more each year. Because what the city would end up doing is we'd levy for this. And its original twenty-four thousand each year. Starting right away in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four would be an interest payment, twenty-five would be a principal and interest payment. And the utility would just be pushed off five years. It gives us a couple other options. Because what that does is it pushes off some of the debt we already have in water and sewer to completely sunset. Within that ten years, giving more cash reserves in the utility funds to help pick up. Sorry, I'll page back up. What was become a twenty-five thousand dollar debt payment a year versus. This is the first one, a lot less. Actually, it's, I think it's about the same. Yeah. Yeah, so not a whole lot of difference. Okay? So, the last file I provided to you guys was a bond test debt schedule, starting, well, this year. And it went up to twenty-six. Because it's gonna take a while for the principal payments to start showing up. And for a lot of the debt that we have, the oh-seven, the oh-nine, the two thousand eleven debt to sunset. So this is what your debt schedule looks like right now. This is what I provided to you guys when we did our budget for this year. This hasn't changed. Page two. Of this document is the two thousand twenty-three. Estimated debt. Based on schedules and this project. In the middle here, where you see this two thousand twenty temp and two thousand twenty USDA, you'll see we have to make an interest payment out of the general fund. Um, that's it. But the two thousand seven debt sunset, so we have no levy right here out of the property taxes, but we still have this thirty-seven grand from the two thousand nine. Like your mortgage is done. It's sunset and you no longer have a payment, okay? So, in the, you still have the two thousand nine debt of thirty-seven thousand, now you have ten thousand here, so if you're watching this bottom three numbers right here, you guys. I've still got this based on our current general funds need and how it affects the total levy based on what we have to levy for debt, okay? This is what I've been trying to calculate going forward to make sure that it doesn't inflate. Because right now, in two thousand twenty-two, this total levy amount is three hundred and forty-one grand, right? But when we get into twenty-three, because things are gonna sunset, sorry Bobby Joe. And other things are gonna pick back up, now we're starting to drop this levy dollar amount. We don't want it to drop too much because we still need this money coming in from the property taxes to pay for the next payment. Now go to twenty-four. Okay, you've got one very small little payment left over in the two thousand nine debt. Seven is gone, eleven is gone, fourteen is gonna make its last payment. And now your levy is at three hundred and sixteen thousand. And our first. Um, solid interest. And revenue payment is being made for the half-year of two thousand twenty-four. We moved to twenty-five. All three of these are gone. Now you have your big. Dollar amounts starting to kick in. How much is gonna get picked up by the utility at that time, because we've got that equipment schedule for ten years? And where your levy is? Everybody follow me? Okay. Well, over the year before, that's just over the year. It's only over two thousand twenty-one, so. Yeah, I would, I would not even look at this number. I would look at this number. Because this is assuming max, that we're never gonna increase our general fund operating budget. No one's gonna get a raise, prices aren't gonna go up, we're not gonna put more fuel, nothing, right? It's just assuming that this operating and maintenance budget's never gonna change. We all know that's not possible, right? But I gotta give you some number to at least get a guy, get an idea about it, right? Okay, so as you get into two thousand twenty-six, this is. Probably a little bit more realistic. You gotta consider amount of debt that's fallen off by now, and what I wanna point out to you guys is it's not just what we've been levying for property taxes. But also, what's also getting paid around the city. Okay, I already mentioned the seven, two thousand seven, two thousand nine, two thousand eleven debts falling off, the two thousand fourteen debt for Fourth Street Northeast is gone. I'm getting there. The three seventeen debt from rural water, this is the sewer debt we needed to finish out this project, that's gone. Okay, and that's being actually paid by assessment, so it really doesn't affect you guys. Now you're gonna jump down. Now the two thousand equipment bond and the clubhouse. Um, is gone, that's, that was gone in twenty-four. The equipment that we bought for the golf course in two thousand sixteen is gone, not saying that we aren't gonna need more new stuff. Um, the liquor store's message board debt is gone. Okay, so there's. There's some room to start moving some stuff around, but you've got a total of fifty-two grand here that's gonna go to the project. In two thousand twenty-six, and still twelve grand is only being used up by utility. You compare that to twenty-two. Where we have thirty-six and eighteen, which is what? Fifty-four. Right?
I didn't know you were asking us.
I'm just trying, just trying to get an idea out of everybody. I'm not saying this is a big risk. My biggest concern is. Couple of things. I'm losing sleep about this. If we do this project, is it a huge strain on the city financially? It's a risk, we all know about. Does it need to get done at some point? Yes, it does. Does that leave us? Operating to do other projects? Hmm, maybe. We already know, we can't use our half percent sales tax that might get passed for our infrastructure now. So you got that to play, you got that to play into the whole conversation, right? And decision. And you all know, my responsibility to you guys is to give you as much information as possible and make sound decision. But at some point in time. My influence, Mike's influence, his expertise, my expertise is what we have to help you get guided through, okay? So you've got a lot to weigh. This is not an exorbitant project. You talk to any of the contracts or contractors that bid on it and some of the subs. This is, we are not asking for the Taj Mahal, and I know a lot of people have used that word. It's a building that's gonna house our equipment and our staff safely for the next. Fifty, sixty years, hopefully. This debt's not gonna sunset till like two thousand sixty-three, so I hope I'm dead by then. No one even knows my name anymore. If this ends up being moved forward. Yeah.
Well.
Questions?
I have one. What I'm hearing. Beyond the one-six that we already are, you know, gonna take and plan on taking. If we take another three hundred, which, okay, let's say that that's the number, let's just say we take full-on three hundred. And we manage to get the project done at that one nine six five number. That's only gonna make a difference of five thousand dollars per year. Is that the ultimate brass tax of what we just went through?
Yeah.
So five thousand dollars a year is what we're really talking about here.
Over ten years. No, for the life of the debt. What Todd was able to do, Bobby Joe, is basically add some more debt, push it, push the other debt down for a full principal payment. But we can pay the, the additional debt back first, because that's only for ten years. The whole debt that we originally walked into is forty.
Thank you. Do you want me to speak though, or you wanna speak first? No, I'm talking to them.
Well, I, I just don't wanna put the city in a predicament that we're walking or we walked in. You know?
I, I would agree with you, Don, because that, that's, that's unfortunately what council after council after council after council. For the last twenty years.
That's.
They've been getting by with what we have on the cheap. You know?
But not looking forward to the future.
No.
This is a very forward thinking project. And I would urge everybody to remember that. This isn't just the next two years, five years. It's not just buying. A new dump truck. This will be the reason why you don't have to buy a new dump truck.
It's also, it, it's an investment in the city itself. It's the city investing in itself, for once. It really is. Yes.
Do I want this project to go? Absolutely. I know Mike does too. I know a lot of people would like to see it go by. I know a lot of people that don't want anything to do with it and think. Crazy to think about that we can afford it. I've been told it many times that we're short-sighted and we're not thinking forward. I gave you guys at least four years. I'd go further out if you want to.
What happens if that old building collapses on all your equipment? Or somebody's inside it?
It's an OSHA issue. I don't know.
I would challenge some of those people to say that they are in fact the short-sighted ones. At some point in time. We have to start doing things. That unfortunately, some people aren't gonna like. I mean, we're, we're never going to please everyone. And we have to do what we think is right by the residents of this town. You know, I mean, that's the ultimate end-all, be-all with why we're all here.
I truly think that. Having a public works department that is ready and capable of responding to natural disasters. Tornadoes, floods. Droughts, heavy snows. They need to be able to come in and get stuff cleaned up and. Get the city back to working order as quickly as possible.
Are we concerned with something drastic happening to our sources or anything in this next? That would add a huge thing to.
Well, you know, with that.
Yes, we are.
We are concerned. We're always concerned about something happening. That's kind of the old, there's always what if, you know? I mean, I can go get in my car and maybe I get in an accident. Should I not drive because I could get in an accident? You know what I mean? Um, we also have the actual, now I'm gonna say CIP again, but in a different term. With the large project that we've been working on for two years.
Yeah.
Roughly.
The P E R E R. That, that's what supports water and wastewater and streets.
That's a separate project that you may not know about yet, or.
I've sent it to him.
Whatever. That, that is a very large. All-encompassing project with a lot of. It hinging on grant money.
It's details. I mean, Kurt was here at the council meeting. He told you guys, like, when we were talking about operating those couple of lift stations. How it could potentially for, you know, the, the grant to loan component of what we could get for. You know, to do big infrastructure projects. But, you know, going back to this whole debt schedule again, you'll, you'll know that, you know, a lot of wa- wastewater debt's gonna fall off in the next three years. And some, you know, the only one that's really gonna continue for the next. Twenty years, I think, fifteen years, is the water tower. That's um, this one right here. For fifty thousand dollars.
You know, with the, the sewer system or the water system. You know, maintenance is a, a big factor in that. You know, and then we can do the best that we can do and there may still be issues. It's something that I cannot give you a definite on, and no one in my position would.
I'd want a lot more money.
So, other.
The idea that. The amount of this building. Could solve. Bunch of sewer issue. That we have as a whole around town or streets.
The cost of the building compared to the cost of what it would take to repair things? Yeah, this building is, is. Pennies in a five-gallon pail compared to. That possible all encompass.
If we had to go down all of Third Street from Summit to Margaret. Peel up all the sewer and repave it, urban gutter.
Yeah, I mean, at that point.
I don't think you'd touch it.
I, I wanna say and, and. Total spitball because I haven't looked at the exact numbers in a while. And knowing how much they've gone up, I'm sure my number's probably off. But at one point in time, you know, if you're gonna peel a block up, you're mostly gonna do the sewer and the water. Depending on what size water, how old it is. By the time you do sewer, water, blacktop. Boy, you're probably getting close to a million dollars a block, I bet. You start thinking about how many blocks need to be done here and there and stuff, you know, or may not need to be done. Yes, I, I see what you're saying with the cost of this building is far, far less than what all the others.
This building will hold the waters. Is there part aspects of the building that help, you know, it's not gonna do anything for infrastructure?
Not, not for that. It'll help us hose.
Indirect.
Parts, you know, repair things, you know, equipment. But directly, it won't do anything for your water or sewer maintenance or this. Other than provide you actual workspace work on.
And we're sitting right now, we have sixty days.
Or.
Make a decision.
Oh, you're kind of a glass organism, that one's.
That, that would be the absolute maximum, I think, and. When you start getting out to that. You start. For lack of a better word, irritating your contractor.
Well, his, uh, his bid is guaranteed sixty days after the problem will be over.
That's correct, but at some point, the city needs to accept that formally so that they can, they can. And, and the city's gotta provide a motion to, you know, uh, an action to move forward.
Yeah.
I, I strongly think that.
Okay, how much have we got in it already? Can I, before we go there, can I actually kind of? Circle back to the beginning and just state kind of my piece? That all right with everybody? Okay, so we started this back in nineteen, right? Late nineteen, early twenty. When we did that, our original. The, the price at first was one-four. I know what we were thinking this was gonna happen for. Um, I had actually. Gotten plans. Semi-plans, I mean, they're drawn out, I still have them. From somewhere outside of Witsa. I had gotten plans drawn. The price tag on that was one point one at that time. If the difference between that and Witsa is all the governmental hoops that we have to jump. Which is what helped to drive this price up. That's a four hundred and some thousand dollar difference, close to five hundred thousand dollar difference just right there. If we were to be able to go out and just hire a contractor and have this done, we could do it for five hundred thousand dollars cheap. Unfortunately, we can't do that, just the way it is. We have to play by the rules. Okay, so now here we are at that price. We talked about it. Everybody was kind of on board. Everybody was on board. I won't say kind of, everyone was on board that, okay. We can make that work. Well. Those numbers were all pre-COVID numbers. They were all before lumber skyrocket, metal skyrocket, plastic, you name it. I realized that this number, this two million and sixty-four thousand is a big number. From talking to many, many people in the industry and, and some that have sat in these chairs prior. These numbers aren't going back now. They're not. So if we sit here and we think, well, maybe five years we'll do it, maybe ten years we'll do it. It's only gonna cost us more than, we're only gonna have to look even harder for this money then. When we're talking about. Five thousand dollars a year is what we're really truly talking about right now. Everybody was a go at one-six. So we're saying we can get three hundred thousand more and that'll cost us five grand a year. That to me is what we're really truly talking about is that five thousand dollars. Now. I know that the bid was two million and sixty-four thousand, so you're looking probably in your head thinking, well, three hundred thousand, that still leaves us. A hundred and sixty-four thousand short or whatever. After the bid opening last week, I was called and I was asked, take a meeting with. The contractor. With TNT Construction. I took a meeting between them, myself. And Daryl from the lumberyard. We sat and we thought about this. Trying to figure out what we can do, knowing that our budget was one-six. This is two million sixty-four thousand. What can be done? Well, I talked with the contractor for hours. I mean, we, we really went over some stuff. And one thing, actually, the main thing that I walked away from that with was. There is something that can be done that's called value engineering. So what essentially has to happen is that the council would have to accept the bid of TNT. With an amend or addendum to value engineer the project. And I, I have the exact words written down, so I'm sorry if they're not exact. But essentially what that is. To touch on something that you had asked with how far are we into this project right now? Christina, a hundred and forty thousand, right?
Oh yeah, the cost of issuing issuance, that's us too, that's in that calculation I gave you guys weeks ago, that would go up.
So.
Be like another seven grand in cost of issuance and closing costs.
So there we'd be up to about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Right?
Our commitment of that two-seventy-nine still stays there.
Right.
That doesn't go away.
So we're in this far. I mean, we're already, you know, the chips, the chips are on the table for us right now. So. To get back to kind of what I was talking here. What the value of engineering is. It's sitting down with the contractor, with the subcontractors. Myself most likely, someone from the council too probably. And going through this building. Inch by inch, trying to find where we can save money. Um, one of those things, for instance, would be flooring. You know, when, when, when we sat there and we discussed this and we went over this. We figured we could pretty easily take a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand off real easily. Off of that two million and sixty-four thousand. That puts us down to one-eight-sixty-four now if we take two hundred thousand, right? We're saying we got one-six, we're saying that we can take three hundred more. That puts us in, that puts us doing this project. Now, everybody's gonna say, you know, or think, well, you know, every contractor's gonna blow smoke up their asses, they want the project. However. Sitting in there and, and I, whatever, Daryl from the lumberyard. Sat where Max used to sit. He is a very. Business-oriented person. Obviously, he owns two lumberyards, other things that's neither here nor there. He has, of the people that I am able to talk with about this and other things. He really truly has his thumb on the pulse of what's going on with the industry right now. And I personally value his opinion quite a lot. With that said, and in talking to him, you know, he's telling me that, okay. Maybe instead of spray foam in certain areas, we can do webbing and do blown-in. In these areas, you know, your windows don't have to be quite as fancy as what Witsa had them. Wrote out at, you know, we can get the same R-value out of a cheaper window. Same with exterior, interior doors. You know, what they were written as is, you know, a kind of a, a nicer door. We can get by with cheaper doors that are still going to do what we need them to do. And, you know, for instance, I mean, that the doors in the project are at fifty thousand dollars for man doors. Well, we think we can cut that substantially, along with a number of other items. So that's something that I really want you guys to understand and know. From the time we started this, what the price was. COVID happened, the price increased. I mean, we've all seen it at the grocery store, at the gas pump, Menards. Lumberyard, everywhere. We, we've all dealt with it in everything. This is no different, other than it's such a big number that it's scary for a lot of people. My recommendation myself. For my department or the city, in my opinion, is that we do this project. That we don't walk away from. If we walk away from it, I think we're gonna be right back here in a few years and we're gonna be in a worse spot. Is my personal opinion on that. Not to mention the fact that I honestly think your tax base, your taxpayers are gonna be a lot more pissed off. If they realize that we threw a hundred and forty thousand dollars in the air and watched it blow away. Versus them paying five thousand more dollars a year. And that's my opinion.
Subsequently, you allow the debt that we currently levy property taxes for to pay for existing debt. Fall off and to not come back or it goes into something else, it'll make it that much harder. For us to justify another debt payment for the same amount in like five or seven years. Or even ten years.
Which is again where we would be in a much worse position.
Yeah.
Start all over with all the paper.
Even further behind the eight ball at that point.
So what do you, what do you say, the value, the value of fading?
Value engineering, value engineering. Um, so to touch on what Christina had said earlier. If that building were to change drastically right now, it has to go out for rebid. If it goes out for rebid, we might as well just pull the plug and be done.
Yeah, because no one's gonna, we had six bids on this thing. We had six. Six.
Okay.
I guarantee those six will come back.
Well, and not only.
So many people off, they won't put back.
Not only that, by the time that we would. Bring new plans together and get them out for bid would be midsummer probably. Right? With how this has been going. Well, if you can get, uh, any contractor at that point is already full for you. You know what happens when contractors are full? Their prices go up.
Uh, honor what we said we'd do and that's to. Talk about the location.
Do you have anything to say about the, about how it gets wet and things?
So I've been here since two thousand nineteen. I have heard. So I've been here since two thousand nineteen. I have heard multiple times that it's been wet there. I didn't grow up here. I don't know anything about the baseball fields everybody played on.
And do I?
All I can go off of is what I am told for. Soil borings, I mean, when you have a company that comes in that does this, I mean, this is what their company does. And they say, okay, yeah, you're gonna need this and you're gonna need this and this and it'll be perfectly suitable. I have to trust them.
So the.
Any architect and engineering firm is going to trust that, I mean, that's how it's done.
Yeah, if you, if you weren't here for the planning commission meeting, I did have Steve Rose on the line. To answer the questions of the planning commission because obviously I'm not an architect, I'm an engineer. And Steve isn't in a structural engineer either, but what he did tell the planning commission is those borings. That were taken and they were put, all those. Locations of those borings were provided to the planning commission for review. I gave them the report to consider. They looked at the erosion control of plans. And Steve said, I'm not a structural engineer either, but what I can tell you is that when those plans were created. They use the information from the borings and what the soils look like. To build the size of the footings, how much grave needs to be brought up with the building and what else needs to be done. He told me after the bid opening, it's like. You know. Is there, is there never a perfect space of a location? Sometimes. But most properties. Can be built on. There aren't many that can't. They just need to be amended, build on them.
But if you go look at this report, look who is the complainer here.
I'm gonna, I'm playing the steps.
I hate to say it, but you know, Commissioner Benson, that's all he has to do is play.
Well, I did play things on that.
Well, thank you, Bobby Joe. The other thing with that location, you know, and uh maybe I haven't said it, maybe I have. You know, if we use that location, another looking forward and thinking ahead point is. If you take a look at Black Duck right now. And look around. Where can we possibly build? And I shouldn't say we, I guess, what I should say is where could a potential business owner? Build a business in this town? There's not very many spots, are there? No, however, and especially spots located towards downtown that we're working to revitalize. We're talking about taking these down over here. However, that lot that we're talking about putting snow on. You know, yeah, we put snow there right now. Okay, could we put a building over there? Yeah, maybe. Do we take snow across the road? Yeah. Starts to get kind of dangerous if you're looking at fifty, sixty trips a day across. One of the busiest highways around with how much semi-traffic, boat traffic, fish house traffic. Beyond that though, take that away. That lot over there. It's already zoned commercial over there. That could very easily go back on the tax rule at some point if we don't build on it. And there are services that run right past it, water and sewer. I would hate to have us. Take that spot. For many reasons, many, many reasons. But that's one substantial one that I think everyone should really think about.
Building kitty corner of City Hall here, the Moonville Moon Drug Pharmacy Bill, that was just brought up.
Yeah.
Thoughts on that?
You know, I was only in there one time when I very first came to town before uh Chan retired. My understanding is that way back in the day, it was an old Ford garage, I think.
Yes.
Chevy or Ford. You know, there to again. You guys really want the public works to be, for one, I'll just say, I don't think that that building will work. Various reasons, but let's say that it did work. Let's say we can make it work somehow. Is really want the public works department on one of the four main corners in town. With all of our equipment going in and out of there with my gravel piles, my salt and sand piles. The noise, all that, is that, I mean, would you guys really consider putting us there? I certainly wouldn't. I think that building is much better suited again. For a business to come in and help revitalize our downtown. I think the last thing you wanna put in is your public list.
Of course, you move the greater around, well, then you got, how old's that building?
Real old.
So, okay.
From what I'm told, there are service doors buried behind the city.
Keep in mind though, that all of this would require rebid.
Absolutely, we'd be starting completely over from the ground up.
Well, you could buy armored land, that affair.
Even if we did that, we were starting over. If if we were to do that, I mean, taking, you did tell him that we would discuss these things when he was sitting here.
But I told the planning commission, he didn't read the minutes, because everybody. Hammered, hammered about location, location. My biggest takeaway when we decided where to put this building was, why did we not put there? And the only thing that I could really remember was this one. And, you know, a couple of the commissioners are like, well, why don't you just flip-flop? I'm like. Okay, industrial lane has had start on it. You don't want great big county and city vehicles going down there. More than they do now. I mean, granted, the building, if the building is there, you have back and forth traffic, but when it's slower mobile. It's ten times more traffic.
Well, and not to mention, I mean, if you were to flip-flop, like you say, then you're looking at putting the three county dumpsters.
I know, so you have increased traffic there too. I like this, my takeaway is there really is no perfect ideal situation here. I was even, I mean, it was even brought up of of property outside the municipality and. You know, that just never even occurred to me, but what I recall thinking after the fact is. There again, we'd have to purchase a piece of property though. So in my mind, we looked at the locations that were already city owned.
And it's been my experience, folks think the city is buying something.
Price doubles. And.
That's been my experience.
And even if we, even if we were to look at that. I can't really think of any privately owned property in town. Large enough to do what we're talking about.
What about Liberty?
There's nothing on Liberty, except for houses.
It's a residential area, you guys gotta think about zoning. Okay, you're not gonna stick a public works building in a residential zone, right?
No, and where, where.
Thing, people aren't realizing that residential versus.
Where, where's our commercial zoning? Essentially down where we are now, you know, in through here.
Yellow is.
I mean, I know this town pretty well.
High is industrial.
The only. Thing that I can really think of off the top of my head that might work, but it would be very tight. I don't, I really don't know that it would work, would be if Stretch sold us the east half of his lots. Between Brian, Brian Larson, and that would be between Brandle and Austin.
Yeah, well, and he's got, he's got a low area in between him and uh.
Yes, there's essentially a creek that runs through there.
Yeah, because the um estate. Washout runs that way.
That is the only. Lot that's fair. To an extent, I mean, he does have a building over on the far west side. But I really can't think of anywhere else.
But it wasn't wet thirty years ago.
It's, I mean, water does run through it, so.
Yeah, and and I even brought that up at the planning commission, I'm like. So we came across the same issues when we did the liquor store addition, you know, our parking lot. Like a huge nose dive last spring, that frost boil that just blew up on us and we had to put geogrid and structurally in order for that. Thing to be stable. That's gonna be like that anywhere in this town.
Well, if you go back a a long ways, you look, this town, correct me if I'm wrong, was built on a swamp.
Around the continental divide, so we basically have.
Was built on swamp and material has been brought in.
Yeah.
To get it to where it is, no different than bringing in material to get that piece where.
There was no way a railroad was going through without it.
Right.
You're not just gonna build in the swamp.
Right. So i- in my opinion, or or what I know of. I don't believe there is a piece of property within the city that could house our. Not only our building, I mean, you you guys need to understand too, not only the building, but. Salt piles, sand piles, you know, various other things that we have and keep around. So, just something.
That will all fit out at any place.
Everything will fit out there.
So the only thing over here would just be for snow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There would be nothing.
Well, right. Even 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 the the container that's out there for the fire hall, you go to them.
Yeah, it could. If you don't know, the fire has a shipping container that they use for training. It is.
That's that red.
Right across from our building, you know, a lot.
It's the safest way for them to do. Contained fire.
Controlled burns.
Controlled burns. So the the spot that houses your equipment now can be used for something else then. Well, the whole, we'll put it back on the tax.
Yeah, the the building that we are in now, we would all like to see it sold and go back on the tax rule. I know of. At least two absolutely for sure parties that are interested in that building as soon as we're out of. And then where the old lumberyard is, the white building, you know, we have to discuss. That's bringing into library, parking lot or addition space.
So that's a city, since it's a city building. We have to bid that or can we just put it on, you know, like listed as real estate?
I'll look into that.
I think it's under that hundred thousand threshold that we can just sell.
I will look into it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, because I would, you know. Before we go telling somebody that it's X amount of dollars.
Oh God, I wouldn't do that without the attorney involved, no way. Not putting, I'm not putting that at risk. So circling back, because, you know, it's a long drawn out conversation. What? What Mike and I need to educate the board on is what, where we are right now. And what my expectation from this board is that by February seventh, this board has made a decision to move forward or stop. So that we can notify the contractor one way or the other, and if you choose. To move forward, then I would strongly advise that the committee that was created to. Get the plans together. Get that committee back together. I realize that there's been some movement of members. Pick back up with TNT. To continue moving forward, because that, there's gonna be some, some needed.
Well, that's, that's that value, value engineering that we discussed.
Like you don't need toilets and stuff.
Nah.
After like.
Don't need those. Yeah, Don's been saying five gallon buckets since this started. There, there are lots of ways, just to reiterate, guys, on that.
Yeah.
We do truly think there are many, many ways to bring this price down.
I wasn't counting on it on Thursday until Friday, so.
You know, when we sat here and those bids opened and all of our jaws hit the table, we, you know. And it was actually, you know, it was, it came from outside, the request for that meeting and it was. Incredibly valuable information to us that I wouldn't have known was a possibility. Apparently it happens very, very often with these types, these larger products or projects. Where they go into value engineering. And one other thing I wanna say about that value engineering. That is something that, to my knowledge, and I will absolutely clarify this, but to my knowledge, that is something that. The architect Wit Seth does not need to be involved in. Which, which, in my opinion, that's my opinion, is going to save us money. Not having to keep paying them all the time.
Okay, so I'm gonna interject a rebuttal to your conversation.
Sure.
Because we have a contract with them. Okay, their services and some of those services that we're discussing could be. May have to be included in that additionally. Depending upon the non, the amount of changes that happen will also. Depend and what they are will depend on how much Angela and USDA need to be involved. Our financier needs to know what we're doing.
Right, I understand that, but at the same time, when you're talking about, okay, this type of panel costs. Thirty-seven dollars, but if we use this same panel, different brand, different manufacturer, costs fourteen. It's the same in the eyes of financier.
But I'm talking drastic change.
Right, which we're already trying to avoid anyways, because if we do anything drastically, we have to. My recommendation would be that on the next council meeting, you guys accept this. With that. Correct?
Oh, it'll be on your agenda.
Yep, so between now and then, I would instruct everybody, if you've got questions. What do you think of something? Don't hesitate to reach out to me on anything. Yep.
Yeah.
There's something you don't understand, you don't, I'm worried you don't understand fully before we do this. Before you vote yes or before you vote no. But it'll be there next month, and I, thank you guys, that's. I know you put a lot of work in on that.
Yeah, my brain is soft, so don't expect a whole lot out. I threw all those numbers together in about two hours, so.
I was.
And I know how you're really good with math.
I was very shocked.
I was surprised that Kevin, Kevin wasn't there.
Next, uh. We are moving on. We need an update on the liquor store.
Everything's up and going. We had a little problem with our air exchanger, but got it fixed. We're just doing some promotions now. We're gonna start doing um back to our weekly sandwich, our specials. We are starting to implement daily specials now as well. Sona and I have been working on getting new menus put together, well, on the page actually, but. To get it out to the public. We're obviously utilizing our sign, so. Let's kind of remind people to check our Facebook page and check our sign, because mainly it's going to change. Mango is in two weeks, we are doing a Super Bowl gathering, so.
Big game party?
Big game party, yes. Right? So we're working on getting that finalized. Yes, you're going to have a. Party. There you go. Otherwise. I know, so you have a question for me?
Water on top?
Yep. Did your water stopper in your? Water heater, I've not heard anything on yet. There are some items that are not done um with this project, uh Wit Seth is aware. Russ Anderson is aware, there's still one more payment. To be made, across Anderson, obviously that won't be done until everything is done. Yeah, so around a little over eighteen thousand dollars that we still owe. Yeah, so around a little over eighteen thousand dollars that we still owe to complete out our obligation to the project. But that will get done until those those items are completed and completed to satisfy. We are starting a list of things that we need as we're going forward now that more, that everything is done, but is not. We have a list of stuff, we talked with Chris Anderson and um talked to Steve last week. Yes, yes. So there are still a few things on our punch list that they need to come back and finish taking care of. The water situation has been taking.
For good?
Oh, is that solved? Uh Steve came in to visit me last week in the middle of lunch crowd and I lost it. And he's like, I'll talk to you in a little bit. Half hour later, Chris Anderson showed up to fix it.
Probably fixed it.
That's what I know.
Yeah.
They um had to go up into the ceiling and re-insulate. So somehow between the firewall going up and the plumbing going in. Somewhere in there, the plastic and insulation.
It got kicked around like you said.
Got moved, which caused the air gap, which caused our water lines in the kitchen. And it's just the ones that are coming into the center. Just the one in the center, yeah. So Kraus, Austin and Jake all rode in the ceiling for about an hour and a half. Fixed it and been going good since then. On the long term, Shonda and I have also had conversations, and I really think it's gonna have to be reevaluated when. This project was done and that firewall went clear to the roof, there was really no additional insulation put into the building up there. And my concern is that that's definitely gonna have to get added. They did um. Austin and Jake did do add in some extra insulation while they were there, other than just to fix plumbing issue that we had. So yes, there was talk about them having to. A session about. We don't have that floor heat anymore. And that in some of the areas of the building where that floor heat was needed, they, there is no um. Venting for the current harnesses to pump heat into there, so like the ladies are in this hole. Cause it got all of its heat from the floor, well, the floor doesn't exist anymore, so we're working with, you know. Cross Anderson and we need to look at that long term because we're worried about.
Yeah, oh. Cold seats in there? Or they should have figured that out before.
Yeah, I think um, I mean, and I, I'm not an engineer, but I'm speculating that when that wall, that firewall had to go up. And there was always that possibility that floor was gonna get cut and never be able to turn back on. Especially when the sewer line had defects, right?
That firewall shouldn't make any difference, even though the whole thing is a cold attic. So if you put a firewall up and it's cold on this side and cold on this side, it doesn't matter. This wall doesn't make any difference because you're not trying to get warm air from this side to go to that side, the whole thing's cold.
Somehow we need to get work from the center.
In the bathroom, as we're talking about, right, the women's bathroom?
Yeah.
I think we're gonna probably end up having to go with like a cold heater. On the wall would be my guess, I think that's probably probably the best option.
Like are veteran, like entryways?
No, the 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 newer nicer cold heaters, they go more up top and the heat comes down, they're a lot more efficient than those older.
Yeah.
And they're relatively inexpensive.
They are really nice.
I see, thank you.
Moving on.
So I put the um lift station back on the work session. Do you guys wanna be talking about this tonight?
I think we're going with the cheap one.
Well. You know, when when we last talked at the council meeting, when Kurt was here, he was essentially saying, hold off. Right, I mean, that's do whatever you have to do to keep them running and hold off on anything major. Well, even the cheap one is major, and I would hate to put that whole thing in. And then in two years, or a year, three years, whatever it comes out to be. Okay, yeah, that's not the same as all the rest of them that we're putting in, so we're just gonna throw all those parts out.
Okay, Mike, I see a lot of charts, you want to put this stuff in layman's terms?
Those are all pump curve charts and efficiency charts. I would have to get out some serious math, you know, the layman's term, that that's the efficiency of. One pump versus the note, the other. You know, your your real cost difference there is one has the. What I'll just call smart technology and one doesn't, that's your twenty thousand dollar price difference there. So I was thinking about this just a little bit when I saw this here that it was on for tonight. How much money is it total, Christina?
Is what, the air heat funding?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what's available.
We're getting. Eighty thousand?
Eighty four. It's about sixty five and fifty four.
Eh, and and what are we allowed to use that for?
Oh wait, no, minus another four, sixty, I'm just gonna call it sixty.
So there's sixty thousand that we can actually use it for?
Yeah, water, water and sewer broadband. Uh pandemic. Stuff, thank you. Yeah.
I don't think that putting that lift station in is a good idea now. With what we're being told, so.
You can just band-aid it together for a while.
Well, I mean, I just got a bill today for all said and done, probably close to three grand. And now it should be good for a while again, so. My thought is, though, you know, when we started doing that big project that this might all fall under. We talked about televising, we had talked about jetting. Maybe we should take some of this money and jet and televise everything that we have. Get it on the record, get it so that we know what we're doing, what we're dealing with exactly. That's one possibility.
I will check and make sure it's.
Water sewer, I I hope it is, yeah, if you wanna confirm that, again, there with jetting, if we don't know what that is. Essentially, a a large water slash vacuum truck comes into town with two inch hose on it. And runs that hose up the sewer at a really super high pressure, the jets are pushing back. With the flow of the sewer, so it brings any dirt, debris, you know. Grease, fat, oil, all that stuff, it brings it through, and I will say that that's actually um. How would I put this? Insurance purposes, we have to make sure that we're maintaining our system. So that when sewer backups do happen, they are an act of God, they call them. And not negligence on our part. Flushing, which is essentially us going to a manhole, dumping two thousand gallons of water down it. Is an acceptable practice, and that's what this town has done. However, jetting is far superior to that, and no questions are ever asked. If you can show that you have jetted any any line, city or house floods. If I can show or has a sewer backup, and I'm just telling you from our point. If I can show that we have done maintenance to that line within four years. We're fine. It's an act of God did it, it's not negligence on our part, because. That stuff, I don't know if you guys have ever seen what happens when a sewer backs up really badly. It costs a lot of money to fix what happens, so long story short, sorry. I think maybe that's what we should look at. And maybe some of the money can be used towards band-aiding the current lift station.
So you wanna put this on hold?
I think at this point in time, we should until Christina can get some clarification, if we can possibly. Televise, jet, see what we can do there.
The jetting won't affect some of the older pipes and stuff that we have? That's pretty powerful, that's uh.
It, you, what you have to understand is that it's, you can dial it down. So when we get into a part of town that we know is old clay tile and it's nasty stuff. Then basically it'll get dialed down and and ran through slower and come back, yep, so.
But it could do more harm.
Okay, on a technicality, I will give you that one, I will give you that on a technicality, however. Standard practice in this industry is that jetting is never a bad thing to do.
Like you said, they can dial.
Yes, yep, yep, dial the pressure down so it's not screaming wide open.
Okay, so.
So, yeah, we we should probably just. Put it on not the far back burner, but maybe just take a timeout until we can get some clarification on.
That's some of the whole.
Yeah, eh.
I've seen some video of that.
The the liner is cool, the the liner is, it's great stuff, the problem is, a lot of our stuff that is bad. Is too small. Because you start getting down to like four inch. And the liner doesn't wanna push through, and even if you somehow did get it pushed through by the time the liner's in. Yeah, you're down to like three inch now, and oh, man, you don't wanna mess with a three inch sewer. Not not for a municipality, you know, I wouldn't even. Yeah, it it wouldn't be good, it wouldn't be good.
I'm I'm good with waiting, man, if you want to put it.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll wait to hear from Christina on the use, and then I'll bring it back to you guys.
Right? I'll jumpers.
Uh, I really don't have any updates right now, I think the last time I reported to the council. Um, the season was pretty much putting us on hold with that lease agreement. The the site is being used right now, even though there's no parking lot done. And it's kind of a home location right now for some of the. Yeah, um, I did attend a club meeting a couple of weeks ago and they had further um. Plans to, you know, sign the location and do some more um. Navigation from seventy one, so. North and south can see it right now, yeah. That's kind of on the board right now.
Reconstruction.
So, um, we didn't have a work session in December. So what I can report to the councils, much better part of my information. The um parties between Witze, JD Construction. And Do Mire Excavating met um just before the Christmas holiday. And went back into the theater and forty eight main to with a structural engineer. To finalize these reconstruction plans um for those walls. And the um, what I can tell you is that. A couple of very good points were determined, first of all. Uh, the only section of the theater that shares a wall with forty eight main is the session. The structural beam that runs the width of the theater is not supported by forty eight. And the back half of the theater, the new section of the reader, also doesn't share a wall with forty eight. All three very good points, so um they took back all that information and. Um, these reconstruction plans were drafted by Witze, and then they were provided to JD Construction on the twenty seventh December. I have spoken with uh Kravenhoff this past Friday. He does have the plans, he needed them larger before he could provide a suitable estimate for the city to know. What those costs will. At which point then we'd be able to bring those parties back together to formulate a timeline, which one. There, that's all. You know, that that number in my head went from six figures down to maybe two or three, I don't know, but we'll see. I'm just a lot more relieved than I was. First part of December, so. Yeah, yeah, um, it is.
So, sex?
Um, Witze and I are working on improving the narrative that's gonna get submitted to the state tax committee the end of this week. Um, their marketing department worked on it over the weekend, and we really beefed it up with some photos to really have a good sale. Um, our attorney reviewed what Witze had put together, and it was. It didn't have enough vision from, you know, an outsider's perspective, and it was suggest to really. Add more. Fluff, if you will, some pretty words, because the people that are gonna be reviewing these have never been here. Um, I think the closest person on the committee uh that is to us is from Delaware. Everybody else is from many other places in the state, so. Um, I provided Witze with some photos, um, some, you know, some camping information where campers have come from. Or numbers have looked in the last two years, same with the ball course, was determined that the ball course is a viable. Um, regional significant uh argument, so we're glad that we put that in. I was told that even the city of Vadena is premiering, so um I hope to have that done. I think I got the proof from Caleb just before the meeting, so I'll look at it tomorrow morning, I hope to have it to the tax committee members by Thursday. The website is kind of been on a hiatus, uh, our web designer. Not only got COVID over the Christmas holiday, but then got influenza A, so I did get an email from Amanda Schaefer. She's been down for almost a month, she told me that in an email that she would reach out as soon as she's heavily possible. She's not been in the best house. Where that's at.
Lori's not here for the five days.
I have received no feedback from anyone.
Alright.
Uh, after the last meeting, I reached back out to my contact from for Rapids and the state. Um, I did inform the council in an email because you guys requested it, so I haven't heard anything since that email, but. On the record, I was told that it isn't a no. But yes, it's just postponed because it's kind of tied up in legal determination, so I hope to hear something by the time first quarter of twenty two is done. Which is fine, that'll get my vacation off my books and then. Yeah. Got too much money wrapped up in these tickets.
We don't wanna talk about that on the record.
I don't want anybody to know where I'm going. We do that in the close portion of this. We do that in the close portion of this.
Yeah.
So that's it for our own business, I forgot something.
Oh, I'm good. No, the thing that we took off the agenda at the last meeting, I see you sitting here in front of us.
Yes.
You approve this stuff?
Yes.
At the next meeting?
There's something that we have to go forward with. Or it is, it was put to us by Paul, our executive MMBA president, which is here in the sort of municipal beverage association. Just remember that, we reach out and talk to them quite a bit about any questions or concerns. Sean and I had a concern about this due to the fact that the lady kind of felt a little pushy, no, it didn't, it didn't seem legit. We were very concerned that it was it just didn't seem right. So we reached out to Paul and he strongly advised us to go with this going forward, that it is a legitimate thing.
What did your city attorney?
And our city attorney did as well. And the only reason that we're gonna go forward with it, or we would like to go forward with it, is because we have TVs that broadcast and licensors, licensees, this just covers us to say if we are broadcasting a game that we're not in violation of Super Bowl law or
CC.
You know,
Copyright.
Copyright or anything like that. So it also allows us our jukebox as well, as you know, we have the iTunes. So this just-
And live music.
And we do do live music.
Comes with live music too.
Yes. Which our insurance, RAM and everything covered anyway, but this just gives us the extra insurance that we're not, that we're following all the copyright laws.
And it's just every year, right?
Yes.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. It just covers our, it just covers us. Oh yes, it was when the city attorney and our executive, our president of the MMBA, the city's, the city's been has had this brought into, brought in front of them for several years and you've been kicking the cannon down the line going, "No, no, no, we're fine, northern amusement covers our jukebox," but in all fairness, no, it doesn't, it covers northern amusement to give us the jukebox, but northern amusement doesn't cover us, yes.
I noticed that the television or radio thing-
In the file that I provided to you guys, check that. If you checked the box and wanted to, which we did. We're good.
Hey, she's keeping you on your toes. All right.
We can maybe have a cover charge?
Yes, you can, yeah. And we've always been able to have that as an option.
All right, last, I think you're, I love last.
Um, so Bob Luke Senior resigned from the planning commission last Wednesday officially. He has been on our planning commission for nineteen years. He also served as a county commissioner for ten years for Bel, Beltrami County, so he, his position will be vacant. It wasn't, he officially resigned on the record. Off the record, Commissioner Benson resigned. I don't have it on the record because the the board had already adjourned. I have to take that at face value, that that seat will also be open as well. So we have room for two appointed positions. All revise resolution one and leave them open unless the council can find somebody or someone that would like to fill those beginning in February.
I have one person who might have approached about it.
Great.
They're in Hines.
Okay.
But they do quite a bit of, it's John Wilson, Winnet. They do, they, it's Winnet Field Services. And they do, so they do quite a bit with planning commissions and
Right.
What would they do with the fencing for different businesses or farmers or whoever? He's pretty familiar with the way that stuff's supposed to break down. Just as a, throw that out there. I would really love to see folks that live in city limits on that.
Can't pay council member. You can't, you can't double vote on something, can't make a recommendation that you would vote in favor of anyway. Has to be someone that's not on the, not on the city council. That's why your county commissioners are not they represent commissioners this way.
Yes. We're all here. And then, uh, we make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn?
Oh.
No, you don't wanna adjourn?
I mean, if you wanna adjourn, then why?
Motion to close this meeting. Close the regular meeting, open, close the door meeting. I have a motion in a second, all in favor? I oppose. None? Stop recording.
You guys can leave.
And everybody can go.
Why don't you calm down?
Sorry, I'm in. You're gonna have to wait a minute. Oh. I'm recording them.
All of them?
No. Okay.
Great, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Uh, now, I entertain a motion if someone wants to make it to close our regular meeting.
I motion.
And we have a second, any discussion on the journey? No, no, imagine that, all in favor?
Aye.
How's that?
Always a pleasure, guys.
Yeah.
Break that thing.